We're moving into number five receipt of petitions or correspondence from the public. When your name is called, Ms. Berry will announce your name. Please come to the podium and Ms. Berry, give them time to get to the podium before you start their three minutes.
Yes, sir.
And please hold your comments to three minutes as close as possible, please. So Ms. Berry, if you would like to call the first person, please.
We have J.W. Bill Kearns.
Please say your name and your address for the record, please, Doc.
Sure. Bill Kearns, J. William Kearns, 140 West 11th Street, Front Royal. That's where I practice. Let me know when to go.
Oh, it starts.
Oh, good. I've been delivering babies in Front Royal since 1978. My main points for tonight are, I think we should press Valley Health to please partner with local and distant collaborators to continue safe OB in Front Royal. It can be done. We should insist that Valley Health immediately work with regional resources to identify and address all obstetrical and neonatal care issues which will occur with the closing of OB May 1st. Not just ER and emergency transfers. Issues local women will have, including transportation, childcare, et cetera. There are a lot of downsides that Kathy Close talked about. At a meeting that I attended with Valley Health, we were asked, we asked them, why not partner with community and other groups to build a state-of-the-art birthing center? Their response was basically, it's too difficult. This doesn't reflect the fact that in the past few years, they have done quite well. The unit has paid for itself and deliveries haven't grown, have grown. An OB who attended the meeting commented there were no OBs who wanted to come to Warren, which was kind of curious because he himself had been recruited to Warren and is an excellent clinician. It may be that the current Valley Health approach to maintaining the support for OB is not optimal. There are hospitals in Virginia which deliver safe OB and neonatal services with under 300 and one under 200 deliveries a year. Warren had 389 last year. I counted them at the delivery book at the hospital. The American College of OB-GYN states that all barriers to obstetrical care in rural areas need to be identified and eliminated, not just emergency transfers. Recent studies looked at what happened with 5 million pregnancies when rural U.S. hospitals closed their obstetrical services. Premature births increased and women had fewer prenatal visits to identify and address complications of pregnancy. Only offering prenatal care did not change that. Valley Health was asked what they could do to mitigate the problems local patients will have, especially those with fewer or no resources. They gave no reply at that meeting. Their lack of acknowledgement of and mute response to the needs of our well-lest-to-do neighbors should concern us all. So back to the original, we should press Valley Health to please partner with local and distant collaborators to continue safe OB in Front Royal and insist that they work with all necessary resources to identify and address all obstetrical and neonatal care issues which will occur with the closing of OB. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for holding to the three minutes. There are so many people who want to speak. Ms. Berry?
Noble Morton.
My name is Noble Morton, 407 Chrysler Road, apartment 203, Front Row, Virginia. Our country doctor spirit, I have two brothers who are doctors, and I worked at the German National Cancer Research Center in Heidelberg for the Launceston Regional Medical Center as a network manager. Our spirit here in this country town is, we care, doctors, they care, and nurses for all patients of all ages, born and unborn, elderly and young, men and women, all races. We have, we're building new schools all the time, new homes in the area. For what? If we're not caring for the, bringing on the next generation of children, we're saying to them, to the teenagers, to the millennials, there's no room in the end for your generation of children. Your wives, some of them are going to die on the way to the hospital. Some of your children are going to die. Who knows what great things these children are going to be able to accomplish if we just give them that edge of having immediate local care? To say to them that in this new hospital that we're claiming is going to be an upgrade, that there's no room in the end for your children, for caring for the pregnant women, that is a catastrophic bunch of nonsense that we all know in our hearts. We have a country spirit here. We need to do the right thing by these folks. Why build new schools and homes if you're not going to have the next generation available to care, to actually occupy them? It's ageism, it's age discrimination. And like I said, each one of us is a unique gift to all human history, never to be repeated, more rare than our DNA. We're called to do great things, each one of us, big and small. Even some of those things, if we don't get them done, they're not going to happen. Who knows? My uncle put the stealth in the B-2 bomber to help us win the Cold War with, under Ronald Reagan. Who knows what the children here will do? We have to err on the side of providing more local care. We can do it. We've got that creative human genius and the leadership in this town council. We expect you to do nothing less than to serve the best interests of all the families. We can't tell the teens, the mothers, the single mothers, the marriages, that there's no place in the end at the new clinic, which will be a downgrade if we don't include the pregnant women and the children. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Krista Adnich.
Hello. My name is Krista Adnich. I live at 9017 Stonewall Jackson Highway here in Front Royal, Virginia. This is my legacy. This is what I leave. And I'm coming up here for them. This is really hard for me to do because I know that as a Valley Health employee and as a nurse here at Warren Memorial Hospital, I open myself up to a lot of criticism just being here and speaking tonight. This takes a lot of courage for me to put my job and my career on the line for my family. I'm a mother of seven children, of which five were born here at this hospital. The care that I receive there at this hospital has been nothing less than exceptional. I'm now being told that the labor and delivery unit is going to be shut down and that I'm just going to have to go to Winchester. If I have a problem with my care and I have to go to the emergency department here at Warren Memorial Hospital, I just have to accept that. Well, I'm a nurse and I know what goes on behind the scenes and I know that there are fields of medicine and specialties of practice, including general family practice, cardiology, neurology, as well as obstetrics. There's a reason for these specializations. Emergency doctors, they are very good doctors, but they simply cannot know everything. According to the Agency for Healthcare Research and Quality in 2008, 94% of women had some sort of pregnancy complication. There were roughly 4 million babies born a year in the U.S., which is a staggering number. Granted, some of these complications were minor, like umbilical cords around the neck, which accounted for 18% of births. But some are not like that. Some are very, very serious. For example, pre-eclampsia, which accounted for 3% to 5% of those pregnancies in the U.S., according to the National Health, National Institute of Health. 4 million times 5% is 200,000 high-risk births just for pre-eclampsia alone. That divided by the number of counties in the U.S., of which there are 3,142, is 63 births per county per year that are at high risk for pre-eclampsia. That's just for pre-eclampsia. Given not all U.S. counties have the same population density, you could, you could expect that we would have a little more than 63 high-risk birth situations. When mothers walk into an emergency department with a life-threatening emergency to themselves or their babies because they can't make it to the hospital 45 minutes away from me, or maybe an hour and 45 minutes away from our surrounding counties that, that need to get there, what level of care are they're going to receive? Does the ER doctor have the experience to know how to handle that situation or other situations that arise during labor and delivery? Or do they have to reference a book or a computer? I can't have that. I can't walk in there knowing that that is going to be me, potentially. And I urge you to do something for this community, for the women. Great communities like ours are built on the backs of women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Salins.
Hi. Mike Salins, 95 Murray's Drive, Middletown, Virginia. I assume, unlike most men in this room, didn't really pay much attention to the closing of the birth unit until I figured out how the closing is going to cost me more money. Very much not happy about that. 2009, my wife was pregnant with our first child and we planned on birthing in Winchester. Her doctor in Winchester was constantly trying to scare her and upsell her on extra tests. And I get it, if you have fancy tools, you want to use them, charge more money, makes sense. Well, we got sick of it and she ended up having a wonderful birth experience at Warren. I was pleasantly surprised when I got the bill, as it was significantly less than our friends who had their kids at Winchester. So it makes sense to me why Valley Health wants to close all other birth units and force women to have their births in Winchester. They want to make more money. The state of Virginia creates health monopolies and Valley Health has a monopoly on birth in Winchester. I'm sure the prices will go up even more once the only option is Winchester for births. What really gets me is how much, how this is going to cost me a lot more money just in taxes. It's inevitable. If every birth costs more money, then the medical birth will cost the taxpayers more, which means higher taxes for all of us. But of course, no higher taxes for Valley Health because they're tax-exempt. The local birth unit closing is going to strain our emergency services, which will inevitably mean more taxes. From reading the research, I know what happens next in areas where local births are, where local birth is pulled out of the hospitals. The entire community will suffer financially and ultimately it will cost me more money by lowering my property values and higher taxes. I'm not happy with it. I hope you all can have some foresight and see what's happening and stop this before it ruins our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Salins.
Melanie Salins, 95 Murray's Drive. Bad men need nothing more to compass their ends than that good men should look on and do nothing. We can sit back and we can watch, or we can stand up for what's right. After all that I have learned over the past two months, I am not going to sit back and watch this without speaking up. And you, as our elected officials, should not be willing to sit back and watch it either. I have repeatedly heard, what can we do? Or our hands are tied. But there is plenty that can be done and I'm here today to say, hear our public outcry and help us in these specific ways. I recognize that what Valley Health is doing is perfectly legal. They can legally abandon women and children and specifically endanger the most vulnerable women who have the least resources. They can legally avoid paying taxes while placing additional strain upon us taxpayers. They can legally create a monopoly on birth and continue to drive up prices. They can even legally declare themselves a nonprofit while putting millions in offshore accounts. But we can stand up and say that while these actions may be legal, they are not moral. We can shame them for their behavior and make them wear the scarlet letter of their sins against our community. What I am asking you to do as elected officials is use your voice and publicly reprimand them. First, we need you to demand answers from Valley Health regarding the transport situation. The birth unit is closing in just a couple of weeks. They still do not have concrete protocols in place for handling transports. We need each one of you to reach out to anyone and everyone involved with transport and get answers in writing. If they don't answer, reach out again, and again, and again, until we actually have real answers. Then make those answers public so your constituents know exactly what to expect. Next, we need you to address Valley Health COPN application. We need each one of you to reach out to the state and explain how Valley Health has misrepresented our community's needs. And then we need you to reach out to the higher-up levels of government to demand changes in these COPN laws in Virginia. COPN is the process that creates medical monopolies and drives up everyone's healthcare costs. It's time Virginia changes these outdated laws. Finally, we need you to take all this into consideration when negotiating Valley Health's pilot. For those who don't know, this stands for payment in lieu of taxes. If Valley Health is going to place their profits ahead of our women's safety, then they should not be given any leniency in what they pay out to our community. cath labs are a huge moneymaker. That's why they want it here and want the women out. If Valley Health prefers to profit off of our town, then we need you to ensure our town also profits off of the business that they are doing here. Thank you, and I hope to hear each and every one of your voices in the newspapers and other forms of media over the next few weeks, speaking out on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Kearns.
Good evening. My name is Kate Kearns. I live at 137 Lawstakers Lane, just on the border of Warren. I come here today with a subject that may seem slightly off-topic. It's not. It is directly related to the health and welfare of the community in all ways. After meeting with Valley Health, several things were made clear to me. Valley Health knows the risk and inevitability of mortality. Valley Health made the situation untenable and then used that as an excuse to close our OB unit. Valley Health has shown no intention of working with this community to come to a compromise. I can only surmise that Valley Health is willing to sacrifice the health and welfare of the most vulnerable of our population, but not their bottom line. Valley Health says it cares about women's health. I most respectfully say, I call BS. Their decision is a symptom of a society that sees and treats women as inferior. We make up 50.6% of this community and the effect of how we are treated ripples throughout. We make up that much, yet we face inequalities that affect all areas, all ages of our lives, from income to education to political representation and of course, our access to healthcare. These disparities take their toll, decreasing our sense of worth, our well-being, increasing chronic stress, which increases the likelihood of anxiety, depression, addiction, sleep problems, cardiovascular diseases, obesity, cognitive difficulties, and autoimmune diseases. Removing OB from our town only increases chronic stress for pregnant women. If it is hard for you to relate, consider your own organs of reproduction. Would you be okay if they needed immediate care and you were asked to travel an extra 30 minutes to an hour to get that care? Chronic stress in pregnant women shortens their gestation, lowers birth weights, and has adverse effects for near, sorry, neurodevelopment and healthcare outcomes in children. Of course, stress at any point in your life is detrimental, but it's particularly damaging in utero, as it can affect the way the brain develops throughout a child's life, not just as an infant. There is evidence that links mood disorders, addiction, ADHD, and even autism with prenatal stress. How does this affect our town in every way, shape and form, and for generations to come? It increases healthcare needs across the board and we'll have to address those healthcare needs, which will increase costs. We make up half the population. We are the primary caretakers in family. We provide the bulk of healthcare in both formal and informal settings, yet our needs for accessible healthcare are not addressed, are disregarded. I'm here to be more than hurt. I want those with the facility to change, to learn how to do so. If your hands are tied, please learn how to untie them. All of this is true for women. All of this is true for the minorities of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kearns.
Michelle Mathia. Sorry if I got that wrong.
Mathie, it's okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Michelle Mathie and I reside at 364 Tulip Poplar Drive, Linden, Virginia. And I am representing Birth Local, which is a lot of the people here. We understand that this meeting is about rezoning. We understand that there are laws that prevent the town council from denying this application based solely on the absence of labor and delivery unit in the new facility. Valley Health is doing what is best for them, contrary to statistical data that shows what will happen here to our women and children and to our economy. They are doing what is best for their business. However, you must do what's best for our town, for your community. A new hospital is wonderful. However, the joy is overshadowed by the complete disregard for a demographic of the community that they say they're serving. I was asked the other day why I care. I can't have more children. I'm potentially moving out of state. But I care because I'm hoping, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I care because this is happening across America and someone must stand up and say enough. And that's us, all of us here there for Birth Local, and that's you, each of you. A study entitled "Loss of Maternity Care: The Cascade of Unforeseen Dangers" shows the whole town will be impacted by the closure. They maintain that the loss of maternity services releases a cascade of adverse consequences for mother, baby, and community. They state, "The frequency of small premature infants goes up, as does maternal and newborn complications. This is seen as due to a lack of support from family and friends, delays in transfer, and other complex issues." These complications dramatically escalate healthcare costs. Many of the remaining physicians suffering under impossible on-call schedules and isolation retire or relocate. And we heard about this from Valley Health's own on-call OB-GYN, who stated that it's exhausting to be on-call so much, which will be somewhat alleviated by doctors in Winchester taking on the patient load. However, he will still be on-call and is 30 minutes away. In an emergency situation, like an umbilical cord around an infant's neck or placental abruption, when two minutes can mean life or death, how will a doctor or a qualified hospital that is at least 30 minutes away help? Physicians, nurses, and the community suffer the loss of an entire skill set related to reproductive and women's health, and as we just heard, that's a women's rights issue. I'm sorry, can I have one more, a little bit longer?
Try to make it brief.
Of course.
Bye, Michelle.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right.
We know how passionate this is to you.
Yes, it is. According to the advisory board, the impact of the hospital's ability to develop patient loyalty, uh, I'm sorry, they've identified critical categories of downstream impacts to consider, and one of them is the impact of the hospital's ability to develop patient loyalty. Because many patients' first contact with a hospital is through labor and delivery, an OB program provides an opportunity to develop loyalty for other hospital services among community residents. With women making 80% of medical decisions in the household regarding where to send their sick kids, husbands, and aging parents, I can see how this would greatly impact our doctors' offices around here if moms choose to take all of their business to Winchester doctors. Therefore, again, impacting our community in a negative way. I am so tired of hearing that this is not our area. There's nothing we can do. Reach out to the media as the mayor, as town councilmen, and stand with us. Represent us. We've tried talking and have met with apathy and dismissiveness. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Jeff Feite.
Hi, my name is Jeff Feite. I live on 641 Tennyson Avenue in Winchester, Virginia. I previously lived on 15 Blue Ridge Avenue in Leroy, Virginia, where I practiced family medicine for 15 years, where both my children were born, living in a town of 5,000 where the hospital didn't provide OB services. My children were born in Harrisonburg in Charlottesville. My current role is on the Chief Operating Officer of Valley's Physician Enterprise, and I work with population health issues as well. I want to thank and applaud everyone for coming out and speaking today about things they're passionate about. I think that's important. This is a, the medical literature on this issue is actually a little more complicated than it's been portrayed here. There are some studies, they're small, that look at the distance of time travel to the hospital and the effect they have on complication rates. But a lot of those studies are done in northwest Canada, where rural means something quite different than it does in the distance between Front Royal and Winchester. There's also another set of studies that show a threefold, in-fold increase in complications if you compare birthing units that do fewer than 500 deliveries a year to those that do more than 1,500. Winchester Medical Center currently does 2,500 deliveries a year. This makes sense. Fortunately, OB complications are relatively rare, serious ones at least. And in a unit that delivers 350 to 400 babies a year, imagine the staff there only seeing a specific complication every six months, or every year, or every two years. Now imagine the pediatricians or family doctors that have to react on the pediatric side, again, not having seen a specific complication in a long period of time. It doesn't stand to reason that they can be as prepared, no matter how hard they want to be or how hard they try. This is also consistent with our experience at Shenandoah Memorial Hospital seven years ago, when we had to make a similarly difficult decision to close the OB unit there. Many of the same concerns were raised. Many citizens came out and passionately and importantly stated their concerns. The reality has been that in the last five years, if you combine Page and Shenandoah, neither of which has an OB unit, we've had five babies delivered in those two hospitals combined. We're aware of no negative outcomes from transport. The mortality rates in those counties of babies born have been the same as they were We at Valley Health are proud of the services we provide to communities. Bringing a cath lab and vascular services and enhanced orthopedic services will do, will do enormous good for the citizens of Front Royal and Warren County, and we're proud to bring them here. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Turner.
Good evening. My name's Michael Turner and we live at 56 Morrison Lane. I'm here this evening to speak against the zoning change for Valley Health until they include a labor and delivery section in the new hospital. I think we can all agree that when something bad happens during pregnancy and labor, it can be a big danger to the moms and babies. I hope we can also agree that having a labor and delivery unit as close as possible to the homes of our families can save lives. The lives of our women and children in Warren County are endangered by moving the labor and delivery unit to Winchester. Valley Health has a hospital monopoly in Warren County through the Certificate of Public Need laws, and I'd like to quote from Virginia State Delegate John O'Bannon, who's working on this at the state level. Quote, "These laws provide hospital systems with a protective monopoly that works against youthful healthcare reforms and patients' choices," end quote. Because no other hospital can compete with them here and provide another labor and delivery unit to serve our families, the moral duties of healthcare fall exclusively to Valley They have a moral duty to provide the basic minimums any hospital should have. We are here tonight to ask you to fulfill your regulatory responsibilities and require them to have a labor and delivery unit before you grant them a rezoning for the new hospital. This is a public safety issue. Valley Health has the right to be a business in our community. They also have a responsibility to provide a basic level of healthcare that they're trying to avoid because they say it doesn't make them enough money. Having a labor and delivery unit in the new hospital is simply a cost of doing business in our community because we want Front Royal and Warren County to be a safer place for women and women and children. As our elected public officials, you are the guardians of our public safety, and this is a public safety issue. To just go along with the program, to just look at this application to verify it's conformed with... That it's in conformity with its own purpose is to rubber stamp the application. There are times in our history where moral stamps must be made, and I believe this is a time like that. The lives of women and children are in danger because a hospital has a monopoly isn't willing to provide basic needs. As a man, and as a Christian, and as a proud member of the Knights of Columbus, I have a sacred duty to defend women and children. And I call upon you to exercise your moral duty and vote against this requested zoning until Valley Health reinstates a labor and delivery unit in the new hospital. Thank you.
Keith Minifee.
My name is Keith Minifee. I'm from Down Home Comfort Bakery, 120 East Main Street. Most of you already know me. I stand before this council and mayor and these fine people here almost apologetic because what I have to say tonight has no really seriousness to it, but just a lighthearted, you know, what I'd like to say about Main Street. Main Street is at a revitalization right now. There are some great things happening. We have an influx of new businesses. We've got the Barnharts that have come in, and Robert McDougal that have come in and put some life back on Main Street. And what I want to say is, our bakery was the first to be totally revitalized, refinished. And what I want to do is formally invite everyone here on the council, or anyone else who would like to attend, for Saturday, April 14th. We're having a grand reopening at our bakery. Everybody's invited. What I do, I'd like to submit a formal invitation to our honorable mayor, Mayor Hollisstark, to cut the ribbon for us there at 10 o'clock on Saturday, April 14th. And like I say, everyone's invited. We're going to have cake. We're going to have a lot of treats. We'll have a lot of giveaways. But it's a time that we can be proud of what's going on in Main Street. You get a chance to... The Barnharts are going to be there. Might get a chance to look at the growth of the breweries coming. But it's... I'd like to see anybody and everybody would come through. And I really like to say I support everyone here that has spoke for this, you know, delivery service and everything. It's a great thing, and mine was just lighthearted. And I thank you and send a formal invitation to each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minifee. You said you were having cake, correct? And that's at... Now, that's at the bakery?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to put a little light side on it for you.
Bruce Rappaport.
How you doing tonight?
All good, Bruce. Just state your name and your address, please.
Bruce Rappaport, 300 West Main Street, Front Royal. Well, I'm on a... I'm going to be on a different subject tonight than the rest of folks, but before I get started, I'll say, back in 1955, Elizabeth Sherman delivered me in Warren Memorial. And I might say she didn't do a bad job. So, Front Royal is a community of about 16,000 in itself. It could be a city in itself, and it's deserving of a birthing center. And I'll leave it at that for you. My reason for being here tonight is I want to speak on the 2015 memorandum of agreement with the corridor. Recently, the folks, the Board of Supervisors, I think, provided you with an option to extend it, and I have a statement, okay? The town lost $600,000 to $800,000 in revenue via annual meals taxes from the corridor after the 2009 Circuit Court decision that blocked any future collections. That resulted in lost revenue for the town between 4.2 million and 5.6 million from 2009 to 2015. In FY 2015, the presiding council and board supervisor negotiated the 2015 MOA to share tax revenue from the corridor meals and lodging taxes. The agreement mandated that the county pays the town 30% of meal taxes and 5% of the 2% collected from the corridor's lodging taxes. The town received $228,000 in FY 2017 of a pool collected by the county totaling $835,000. The county received $607,000 in FY 2017 of that same $835,000 in meals and lodging taxes. Percentage-wise, the town receives 27%, and the county receives 73% of that pool. Now, the county wants to mandate this agreement out for the next 25 years, not to mention that the town would agree to not try to annex any future land in the North Corridor for the next 25 years. Now, prorate the revenue sharing of the corridor tax dollars out 25 years. From 2009 to 2044, the town receives 5.7 million, and the county receives 15.2 million. It will take the town 30 years to recover the revenue lost from 2009 to 2015 under this proposal, and the gap exponentially continues the beat of the drum for 25 more. I ask you, who paid for the majority cost of the infrastructure that has allowed the corridor to develop to what it is today? The town of Front Royal citizens and property owners paid the majority of that cost, and you can refer to Walter Duncan's manifesto that he wrote before he died.
Bruce, I'm sorry. Could you kind of wrap it up a little bit, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But this is important.
It is.
Okay. Now, the Board of Supervisors want council to lock the town into a 27% to 73% revenue sharing agreement favoring the county for the next 25 years and handcuff the town from annexing any corridor land during the same period, thus limiting the town's ability to grow towards Winchester on prime development land. This is a generation... 25 years is a generation. How fair is that to the town tax-paying citizens and property owners? The 2015 MOA was a bad deal for the town then, and it is a bad deal for the town now. Please do not take this deal. You need to negotiate nothing less than a 50-50 split on the corridor tax sharing revenue. Anything other than that is irresponsible, and there is no reason for the council to handcuff future councils for 25 years to invoke options to annex corridor property if future boundary adjustments cannot be successfully negotiated within the county. You want the town to maintain its autonomy...
Mr. Rappaport.
Then do not take this deal.
I'm sorry.
It's not about Chick-fil-A.
Exactly.
It's all about Front Royal and its autonomy, and to be able to pay for the future projects that you want, and you need this funding. Thank you.
I understand, but I'm just letting you know that those other people would like to speak.
I understand.
Thank you. I know you do. And by the way, I was born at the Warren Memorial Hospital in 1951, so I got you by a few years. I was told by my mother I was the first delivery at the new hospital in 1951, so... Ms. Berry, next. Thank you, Bruce.
Jeanne McGurk.
My name's Eugene McGurk. I live on Chestnut Hill Drive in Front Royal, and I want to thank you for being here for us. I ask the board to make any zoning permit for the new hospital in Front Royal contingent on the new hospital's having a maternity section. I understand the concern that the maternity section of the current Warren Memorial had only about one birth a day last year, but the county is growing, so that should increase and still represents 365 families, or corrected to 389, that didn't have to find their way to Winchester to turn... Or turn to potentially less competent healthcare locally. A hospital provides public services, and Valley Health is a nonprofit organization, so the cost of a single unit should not be an overwhelming concern. The safety of mothers and babies of the community should be the primary concern. Many businesses have departments that are loss leaders in order to keep customers happy who use their much more profitable products. Although Valley Health may look at the maternity center as a cost center, the community sees one as a family-oriented, life-giving, and life-saving necessity. A hospital-related maternity center is not a luxury, is a necessity to any community, especially this community, where population growth is continued to be expected. I again ask that the board should approve only the hospital's zoning request if the maternity center is included in their plans, and if by some technicality of state law you feel you must go on with this approval, perhaps you should let them take it to court and see if it's really justified. And if, the very least, give a unanimous resolution that the board of town of Front Royal wants the maternity center for the protection of women and children in this community in the future. Thank you.
Eugene.
Mark Merrill.
Good evening. My name is Mark Merrill. I'm the president and CEO of Valley Health System, and I live in 765 Sheldon Drive in Winchester. I first would like to thank Kristen, and Melanie, and Kate, and others who spoke. Your passion is obvious and evident, and we appreciate your interest and glad that you are speaking out. I don't have a whole lot more to add than what we did last month. We discussed this. I think Dr. Feit provided a good summary of some of the clinical issues, but we don't take decisions about our healthcare system lightly. I would like to respond on some of the comments that were made about our organization putting profits ahead of people, and with regard to racking up charges. We do have a common charge master, so charges at Winchester and charges at Warren are consistent. In terms of our commitment to this community, I think it's quite evident. If you look at our organization, we are investing a number of programs and services which are money losers. We are the region's only Level 2 trauma center, where we have a 400 square mile where anybody who has a highway accident, a car accident, a fall, a fire, anything like this, they are brought to Winchester Medical Center. And it is absolutely critical that they get there within an hour. And so, we have worked very diligently to have protocols in place so that any victim of a trauma can get to Winchester Medical Center, where we have 24 hours a day, blood banking, surgeons, orthopedic surgeons, neurosurgeons. That is a substantial investment that our healthcare system makes for this regional community, which is not a moneymaker. We also operate behavioral health services across our system, in particular at Winchester Medical Center. A majority of the patients who come to our behavioral health service are unfunded, and they have very difficult issues. We maintain the service because it's appropriate for this region. We currently are dealing with an opioid crisis, but we have significant investments to deal with the opioid crisis, to include very intense services for newborns born who are addicted to drugs, and they are in our neonatal intensive care unit at a quite an exorbitant expense. We care about women's health. We have invested over the years in children's programs and healthy families so that mothers can have the best start possible for their babies and for themselves. As I shared last month, currently, 38% of the women are choosing to deliver at Warren Memorial Hospital. Over 60% of the women from Warren County and Front Royal are electing to deliver their babies elsewhere, with the vast majority of them going to Winchester Medical Center. 33% to 34% of the women from Warren County and Front Royal have elected already to go to Winchester Medical Center. As Dr. Feit referenced, we have significant resources in place at Winchester Medical Center that will care for all patients regardless of their ability to pay. We have in-house OB-GYNs. We have blood banking. We have neonatologists, and we have anesthesia to deal with emergencies as well as routine. Our commitment to this community goes long and deep. As I shared last month, Warren Royal Hospital has provided over $6 million per year in charity care and community benefit, and if you take the unreimbursed cost for Medicaid and for bad debts, it's over $16 million. Valley Health's commitment has been over $55 million annually. We know that our numbers stack up very favorably with regard to tax if we had been a taxable organization, because we are the sole provider of this community, and we take that responsibility seriously. Finally, another people went off, as Dr. Feit mentioned, we look very carefully before making this decision with regard to travel times. Shenandoah County has a population larger than Front Royal in Warren County. We made the decision to close the OB service. The same concerns were raised, and we have worked very diligently to make sure that maternal health is continued in that particular region. As Dr. Feit mentioned also, across our four hospitals, we delivered 10 babies over the last five years and seven months in the emergency department, and 33 patients present with a pregnancy complication, and they were referred for appropriate care so that their pregnancy complication could be handled effectively with experts. So again, we appreciate the council's consideration of our request. We remain committed to this community, and we look forward to working with the communities in the coming years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanne Anderson.
Deep breath.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Anderson, and I live at 7T Court in Linden, Virginia. The Northern Virginia Daily reported that Valley Health has said Warren Memorial Hospital is not suitable for birthing, all the more reason to build a new hospital that is suitable. Valley Health uses age-range projections to justify hurting women and children. The age-range projections are just estimated generational fluctuations, but births do not decrease, just as our total population does not decrease. The number of births fluctuate from year to year but overall increase, and we have shown you that. This picture Valley Health gives you is foolishness. They use ages 65 and older to focus on what will make them the most money. Ages 65 and older do need care, and so do mothers and babies. Having a Level 3 NICU in Winchester Medical Center and having a satellite labor and delivery unit at Warren Memorial Hospital is not such a problem for staff recruitment or obtaining services, as the gentleman mentioned. Novant obstetricians deliver at both Haymarket and Menassas, so you have the same level of care and experience and number of births that they handle. Closing our labor and delivery unit is ultimately a financial decision to funnel births to Winchester Medical Center and create a higher revenue stream to pay for the NICU that's very expensive that he just stated. And by limiting access to care and creating time constraints, research shows that Level 3 admittance will increase from necessity. Does that mean the NICU 3 unit is not medically appropriate to care? Absolutely not. But this does strongly indicate that profits before patients, and I question the integrity of Valley Health's public health policies. I'm not the first person. In fact, the FDA has warned them very sternly before. Perhaps they should not be designated a 501(c)(3) either. And since Valley Health has made it clear to the public that they do place profits before patients, the easiest choice for us in the matter is to boycott their system. However, it is a certain shame because not all within our service area have the socioeconomic means to choose. And very truly, I tell you, that is the reason why I am here before you today, and that I ask you to stand up, and that I ask the media to stand up, and that I ask Virginia to stand up. Your hands are not tied. On January 5th, the Board of Supervisors clearly identified support of the labor and delivery unit to Warren Memorial Hospital, but has it been heard by Valley Health in Richmond? The town is just as capable of such communications. I want to present to you Resolution Number 48-17 in Medina, Ohio. Last year, they passed a resolution for the town, and I implore you to pass a joint resolution with the county and any other surrounding counties that may join you. In... join you. And you can, we have this, you can draft the language, you can redraft it to suit our needs here. There's also here a petition, an outline for a petition, that you can submit to the Virginia Department of Health adjudication office before April 23rd. I know that's approaching fast, but this can be done. These are things that you can do, and these are things that we are asking you to do. I urge you to work with the community in also drafting a letter to the Virginia Department of Health, Office of License Insurance Certification, and to the Commissioner of Health's Office. Again, you are more than capable to do that, and I believe it is your duty in serving the people here of our town, and I'll be happy to give you this. Thank you.
Jean, could you pass those to the clerk of council?
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Floyd Heater.
Thank you. I'm Floyd Heater. I'm president at Warren Memorial Hospital. I live at 289 Meadow Drive in Edinburgh, Virginia. Dr. Feit and Mr. Merrill both gave you the numbers in terms of the number of births over the last several years that we've actually had in our emergency departments. That averages about one, maybe two, per year at our regional hospitals. I want you to know that since we had to announce an earlier-than-expected closure date for the Women's Care Center a couple of months ago, we've had a multidisciplinary team comprised of our physician offices, leaders from the medical center, physicians from Warren Memorial, as well as working with external agencies, EMS leaders, to prepare for the closure of our unit on May 1st. It addresses transportation issues, both what we are planning internally with our Valley Medical Transport, as well as trying to work with our emergency medical services personnel to help with ensure patient safety for our community. I won't reiterate everything that I said at the first hearing that you had a while back, but I do want to stress that the importance of prenatal care and determining outcomes for a mother and baby. Prenatal care will continue to be offered in Front Royal. That is not going away. The doctor will be there with the mother all the way through the first nine months of her pregnancy. The actual time that the mother will not be able to receive her care in Front Royal is for the delivery itself. So, I want to stress that our doctors in their offices will be available in Front Royal, in La Ray, and in Woodstock. Mr. Merrill mentioned, I think it's worth reiterating that currently, when we look at our population growth, and it has implications for how, when you're going to invest $100 million into your community, you want to do it as wisely as you can. And it has, where the population is growing, who's using your services, who's not using your services, it has implications for the kind of services that you offer into the future. Our population's going to grow in Warren County about 10% over the next 10 years. The age 15 to 44 bracket is going to increase about 6.6%. The over 65 population is going to grow at 45%. So, you can understand that when you look at your population mix, where the demand for services is going to be. Also should mention that about 33% of the mothers delivering babies from Warren County go to Winchester Medical Center already. We looked at that. We had to take that into account. And there's multiple reasons for that. Some are just patient preference, doctor preference, but we believe a good number of those mothers want to be close to a neonatal intensive care unit. That's certainly part of the decision matrix, maybe not all. And so, we recognize we've invested a lot into those services at the medical center, and we believe that's, going forward, the best alternative for citizens of our community, to be closer to those higher-end services from a patient safety perspective. Again, we look forward to investing heavily in our community over the next few years. We're proud that we're almost at that point where we can break ground later this summer, and I thank you for your consideration of our rezoning application, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brett Herbeck.
Mr. Mayor, fellow members of council, thank you for letting me come up here and speak.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Get there. Brett Herbeck, 335 Locust Hill Road. I'm here to ask you to deny the application as well. Warren Memorial Hospital is incredibly important to, I think, this community, as to my family. Just a quick story, because there's another topic, too, I want to get to, is that my son, my third son, when he was, we had our OB who left, Dr. Toth left, referred us to a doctor in Winchester. We went up there for that child. I asked how we have the baby in Front Royal, and they said, get a doctor in Front Royal. That's the attitude that we had from the folks in Winchester. We don't go to Front Royal for that. However, the Valley Health and the Warren Memorial Women's Center was one of the best experiences my family's ever had. Not only did they treat my wife correctly, which is the important one, they treated me phenomenally, as I believe a planitree or a planitree facility. It was a phenomenal experience. All four of them were born C-sections there. I think that it's important to identify where you're born, where you live. You will carry that for the rest of your life. Your birth certificate will say Winchester now, even though you're from Front Royal. That means something. It means something to me. It means something enough that I wanted my children to have Front Royal on their birth certificate. In 2008, when we had to go up to Winchester for those doctor's appointments, and they insisted that my wife have her appointment at 1:00, so she had to take a day off of school as opposed to a half a day or a part day if it was here in Front Royal, and the gasoline was $4 or $5 a gallon, it was a struggle, which is, again, why we wanted to have the doctors here, the birth here. Floyd pointed out that the doctors are still here in Front Royal, but one of the arguments that they don't want to have a hospital or have a medical center for birthing here in Front Royal is that they can't attract doctors to Front Royal. Perhaps we flip that on the head and put a new state-of-the-art facility, attract the different kind of birthing. I would imagine there's plenty of home births in Warren County. There are plenty of people that go to Loudoun County for those alternative birthing. Why don't we try to bring those folks into our system here in Warren County, and then perhaps attract some new doctors into Front Royal as well? The economic development in town, I think, is tied to this. What kind of message do we send to new businesses? How do we tell Nikki Foster and Felicia and Jennifer McDonald to go out and recruit businesses when we're doing the opposite, when we're stopping a birthing center here in Warren County, where we're ending that? We're losing a vital part of an economic development tool in our community. It sends the opposite message of what the millions of dollars that we just put into Leechers Run, which the hospital couldn't build if we hadn't done that, how many millions of dollars we've done and invested in that, in the schools? And frankly, the last point I want to make is how we're not growing. We, when I was on council, we rezoned an area to put 1,000 new single-family units in there. These aren't 65-year-olds. We're not building facilities for seniors to live in. We're building facilities in schools for young families who are going to have new children, and they're going to go to Winchester. We're going to go to Winchester. They're going to become Winchester-centric, and we're going to lose our identity of Front Royal. That's why we need it. That's why I ask you, because it's the best, not in the best interest of Front Royal, to put a facility there that does not have a place to have your babies and have your children. I wanted to speak on annexation. Please don't do 25 years. It's way too long. It's too long, too long. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett.
That was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much.